It's 6:30, I'll call the meeting to order. Number two, order agenda amendments we have done today. Number three, select board minutes from March 21, '22. Glad motion, the second to discuss.
I make a motion to discuss.
Second. Are there any corrections? Anything that needs to be changed, looked at, amended? Hearing none, I'll move the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pay orders for four, five tomorrow of '22. There is one change here. The clever bridge, third item down, has been changed to 74.99 from the 79.49. I understand that that was a change in the way the tax was done. I believe that they, that we were exempt from the sales tax. The current is 11,673.72. Do I have a motion, the second to consider?
I make a motion to accept pay orders for, what was that cost again? It was 11,673.72?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
I can't read my own writing.
Second.
Good.
Any discussion? Just do it. Motion, all in favor of the 11,673.22, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would just note that the only honorable mention we have this week is that the Wallingford Rotary's upcoming park dinner already has over 100 people with orders placed. Hopefully it'll be quite successful. Moving on.
What's the final tally, Erica? Erica has the final tally.
We've got 108 pay orders. We've had, at least times, do this from the river. So we've had approximately 125 people, full quarters.
Very good.
Thank you.
Public comment, Harry. Anybody out there have something they wish to bring forward? You have the Vermont Trans-Paving Grant. It's an application. This is done just about every year, so we keep our name in there. Are we all in agreement to submit this? Basically, we just need to sign off on it.
Yeah.
Okay. My consensus, Sandy. The Conservation's Commission grant application, in the amount of $600. From what I've read here, they're going to have a look, see if the trails upcoming. And I assume that this is the grant that'll cover that.
That's right.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to comment about it, or?
No, I just, I see you only had a few minutes on the agenda, so I'll just ask if there's any questions that I can answer for anybody.
Any questions?
Is it for like major, like, see if any of the trails need fixed, or making new trails, or?
So it's, so we have, we've, in the past, we've applied for grants in the past and didn't receive them for specific things, like widening the trails and fixing some things. And we thought, this is a tiny grant, $600. So let's get, go forward with this and get a professional trail builder in, and get a professional opinion who has experience with other trail systems and things, and kind of get a blank slate assessment of the whole park. And then combine that with our own thoughts and, and public comment as well, and try to put a good plan in place for moving forward. So this grant will not cover any improvements. This grant is strictly on, for an assessment and planning and a proposal. And then next year, we would, we would pursue other grants to implement whatever, whatever plans are we agree upon. But it would be things like potentially widening the trail, improving, improving some of the steps. And are there any other ideas that come up?
I think we're all in agreement to go ahead with this. Rotary coin drop.
Yes. The Rotary, Steve, remember, he did a question with, he's more busy, so. The Rotary, the road lesions, we question the commissioner of tenants to do our annual coin drop, 20th of July, from nine in the morning to one in the afternoon, with a rate made of 30th of June, uh, 30th of July.
That's the following week.
Right. The Rotary, that's one of our major fundraisers, and we usually net about 100, $250 in coinage per hour. And that money is used for, obviously charities, it's also used, part of it, if we need to, is used for a home river scholarship. So it's not for us as much as it is to fund our charitable margins, much like Fort Dunham was.
And from what you wrote down here, is that's coming right in front of the Rotary building?
The usual spot, yeah. Which is actually more like in front of the post office, because we can't have it right in front of the Rotary building because of the, the road there. So we push it on down. But we do have the proper signs, as you know, we have the cones. It will be only the adults out going through the points. We may have interact students that are part of, I call them junior Rotary, but there are no River students who help us out. They don't go into the street. They are the runners. So it's just the adults. And as you know, we don't really pester people. It's just dropping. Thank you very much, and continue on.
Any questions on the Rotary? Is everybody okay with signing off on it? I assume you've got the AOT's permission also.
Excuse me?
AOT normally issues a permit.
We have to get yours first, then we go to the other.
Okay.
So, yes.
My consensus, Sandy.
Yeah, we, this is a chicken and egg thing.
Right, right, right. The, you guys here are for everything.
Yeah. We're on them.
Transportation councils, their resignation and reappointment. I believe we probably have it in your paperwork. Erica would like to step away from that. And I understand Bruce would like to apply for it. Bit unusual, but.
It is one of these funny things. I replaced him, so he should replace me.
Well, I also was functioning this role before I'm overseas, so I'm sure it's a little bit, but we should be done.
Do we have any comments, or anything? Are we okay with?
Do we have to open it up for the, like, applications for anybody who wants to do it?
Well, it's for the transportation. The council's the one that basically rules over the order of highways, how they're going to come up. Right now, our big project, we'd like to see the bridge over on Creek Road brought to the attention, hopefully with a grant here eventually.
Actually, to a culvert, before you get to the bridge.
Is there anybody agreeing with the appointment or resignation?
Yeah.
Okay. Lisa, the update on the recreation program, the?
I have a little packet for you to view.
It's okay, I can share. It's okay, Lisa.
Take that for now.
Thank you.
Okay. So the first pieces of information are on the, the budget stuff. So I found that, we were talking last time about how my budget was cut for field trips, especially because last year was a shortened year, so we didn't even use all the money. And then this year, we are going to do four weeks. And I'm assuming, I haven't done any inquiries yet with the bus company, but I'm assuming that rates are going to be much higher because of the cost of fuel. So I'm really worried that we're not going to be able to do very much. So I was told that the reason that it was cut was because of line items for $1,000 to Rutland. So I got the information from Julie, and there is a line on this document that she gave me, that just lists all of the expenses, and these go back to 2010, for field trips. And there's one line that is $1,115.89. However, when the bus company bills us, they bill us for several trips on one invoice. This invoice was for a trip to Queechee Gorge, and two trips to Rutland, one to the Norman Rockwell Museum, and one to White's, actually, that might have been, that might have been one field trip. But the Queechee Gorge field trip would have been fairly expensive. I do have the invoice. I didn't add that to your pile, because I was trying not to kill too many trees. But, but that particular invoice was for Queechee Gorge, a trip to Norman Rockwell Museum, and then a second trip to the Marvell Museum in Proctor. And then we stopped at White's Pool on the way back from that. So it was three field trips for 100, for $1,115.89. And then the only other one that I saw that was, might have been a concerning amount, was one that was $721.25, and that also was multiple trips. That's the way they tend to bill us. They don't bill us for just one trip. Usually, they're back-to-back, so they'll do, and sometimes even two in one week, but they'll bill us for multiple trips. So the other one was for, that particular one for $721 was a trip to Wallingford, or to, Wonderife and White's Pool. And then we went back to Rutland and went to Peg TV a couple weeks later. So, so yes, I'm just really frustrated that my budget was cut when I could have given you this information if I'd known that there was a problem, or that there was a concern about, about what was being spent. You know, I really work very hard at trying to make sure that I get as many trips as possible and stay within the budget, and, you know, make decisions sometimes based on, you know, things that are going to be too pricey. So we've even gone so far as to try to find different transportation, because the bus company is pretty expensive. But it was just really hard to find anything that would, our kids kind of, because of the size of the camp, they're a little bit too large for like smaller things. Like I tried, I checked with Kelly Socia, thinking that his little rig might be a good transportation for us, but we just couldn't, he could only hold like 12 to 15 kids, and that was just, you know, we have, 15 is usually like the low point, and then we have it like maybe between 15 and 20 on an average. So couldn't really count on that as transportation. We even looked into the, trying to take the bus sometimes. But again, it just.
So Lisa, would you mind reminding me how much we cut your budget by?
Let's see, it's $500.
$500? Can I donate some of my selectmen stipend to cover the difference in the cost of the Well, the select board has, from what I understand, a history of donating back their pay towards worthy causes that they support. I support.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. If I can get away with not spending it, I will, but we'll see how things go. Like I said, I haven't even, like, submitted anything yet to the bus company to get the, to get their estimates, so that's usually.
That helps, because.
That might help a lot.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
I will go along with that also, and split that, so it's not all.
Okay. And then the other piece of information that's in your packet is, and I'll give you this copy, Carol, it's what I kind of put together as sort of my idea around how we would run this council and training program. I took bits and pieces, I looked up a bunch of different programs that are already running, and kind of took bits and pieces of theirs. And we had done our own sort of outline of an application when we were thinking about doing it a few years ago. So I sort of put all that together. It's still a very rough draft, but just kind of just gives you an idea of what we're thinking about doing. It's just offering an opportunity for the campers to, to come, hang out with the younger campers, be leaders, and help implement the program, and maybe help do some of the planning of activities, and, you know, and really just kind of mentor the younger campers. They would, you know, have some responsibilities, pretty specific, and we would be always monitoring them. Like, it's not like we would leave a 12-year-old with, unassisted or unattended with other campers, so.
Do you have a set amount, like a ratio, like if you have so many campers, you can take so many counselors, you have so many adults, you can take so many.
I hadn't really thought about it in those terms. I was thinking of just starting out with like maybe three or four, just to get an idea, maybe, you know, one per camp, or, you know, one per camp week, depending on the interest. I guess we have to see how many kids are interested first, so. But I sort of just did a rough kind of idea of what we would want to put on an application. And then we would need to talk about whether or not we want to actually charge a fee. There are some camps that charge a fee. It's a nominal fee compared to what their normal weekly fee is. But there was one in Norwich, doesn't charge anything at all. They do one up there in the town of Norwich. So, oh, it's something that we could discuss at a later date if you decide you want to do this. But I kind of would not want to charge, but at the same time, I think that if we do at least have some sort of nominal fee, it might be a little bit more motivation for students or for campers to follow through.
Cover a few of their costs, like.
Yes.
Like the field trips. Get extra food, or what have you.
So, so we could do a nominal fee. We only charge 65 a week already for campers, so maybe do like a $25 or $30 a week, or something like that. And then there would be another participation waiver, like a whole harmless kind of thing that we would have to sign. They would have to sign a sort of commitment to the requirements and the responsibility of being a good camp counselor. We'd ask some sort of, you know, questions about why they want to be a counselor, have they done it before, have they been to our camp before, if they have, how many years? All of those things would be good pieces of information to help select which candidates we would want to take into the program. So, again, it would depend on the amount of kids who are interested. So I guess the quicker we get this done and out, the quicker we would know about. So I'm going to give you this now, Carol, let's see if I can turn it over. Oh, I gave you two, nor do you see. I wasn't moving.
Do you, Lisa, have you thought about on the other end of it, like at the end of the summer, how you're, because you have the briefing like beforehand, are you going to have a?
Oh, do a briefing at the end, absolutely. I think we would do for each week, depending on if that camper was, was the only week they were going to do. We would do some sort of like a survey, which we do for campers anyway. We do a survey at the end of the summer, so we can get an idea of the things they really liked, and the things that they would like to see differently. So we could do the same thing.
Especially with the new program, going forward, having some data to be able to come back and say, this is worth it.
Yeah, absolutely. That would be a fine idea to.
And also reinforce the idea that you actually helped us out quite a bit, and making it so that if we're putting these kids in a situation where they're, we want them to have responsibility, making sure that we recognize that responsibility.
Yes, we've done a hell of a deal that as well.
Yeah. I figured you would, knowing, 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 teaching and everything else when I worked with you. That's, but yeah, just wanted to make sure.
And what does that pay rates?
Does that pay rates for the summer?
Yeah, for the summer.
Thought we did.
Like, we looked them over from la, last time we looked them over. I don't know if we did anything.
We haven't said yet.
We didn't say yet we want to adjust there or anything else.
Okay. So you don't have.
Do you use the, were you saying, saying the minimum wage last year? Actually, I think the, the minimum wage is about what we used last year, isn't it?
Oh, for concessions, yeah. They get minimum wage. I can put it on the agenda for the next one, so you have a chance.
I don't remember setting anything when we did the budget.
I think we just used a general figure. We didn't, we didn't.
You just, you do, you did summer rec salaries and then Elfin Lake salaries. You just did line items, not individuals. But we can, I can put that on the next agenda.
Okay, that, that probably is out.
Like, we had, where it was, Lisa, you had said like this is the amount that you expect to do for payroll.
Right.
And then this is how much, because you want to give more hours to the other two counselors, right?
Right.
Right.
For the, the time with the campers. That's.
Right.
What's everybody's feeling about this, about the program that she's proposing?
Yeah.
Do we give her the go-ahead, whatever?
Oh, did you check in for the insurance, if it changes at all?
No, I do not, but maybe.
That's a good thing to do, to check on the insurance.
But I know, you know, like I said, that there are a lot of other camps that are doing this, so I don't, but I don't know that piece, but I can, I can find that out.
That would be the only thing, just because we're putting them in a situation where they might see that they have more responsibility, making sure that they know they're still kiddos.
I think that's a good area to just button down.
Other than that, I'm.
I would suggest we bring this back up at the next meeting.
Sure. Move us to the.
Take the time to absorb it and give it some thought, not just jump on it tonight.
No.
Not that I'm opposed to it or anything, just.
No, that's, I think that's a good decision, since we just got this, now it gives us a time, a chance to really look it over.
I won't be available at the next meeting, because I'm going to be out of town, but if you have any other questions, or you want to reach out to me, email me, you can call me. Sandy has my email, so if you want to do that. And she also has, she has all my phone numbers, so. She knows how to find me.
I will not be at the next meeting either.
Okay.
Giving it a lot of thought, Lisa, looks, looks good.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a great way to keep kids that would otherwise age out.
I think it's a great way to keep kids, you know, busy during the summer and not home alone, and also to maybe get them more interested in becoming counselors, or concession workers, or maybe lifeguards.
This could be a real win-win for the town. I thank you for doing all your research on this and bringing this to us this evening.
Speaking of lifeguards, so right now, we only have one application, and we're obviously still looking. And that, one person we have will need July 1st to July 10th off, so that would be your second week of camp.
Okay, we'll figure something out. There is an upcoming certification that's happening at, at White's, or Red, oh, where is, I wrote it down here somewhere. But there is an upcoming one, I'll send you the information on it.
I contacted Kim Peters from Rutland Rec and told her we were looking, and she said she would give our name out. I did the same with VAC and Bennington, YMCA, and Marcus Levy, so they're, all know we're looking.
Right.
Send something to Anne Beatty's number, and the secretary at Red, ask her if she could put it on their announcement in the newsletter.
That's great, it's going to go in the choir.
Yeah.
That would be great.
And in our town newsletter, too.
We know.
Obviously, we know already, but we really need one more.
Kids are not going to be looking at our town newsletter from Port Forum or any place we have it advertised. It needs to be at their level to pique their interest.
Right. Have we ever done a, like a sponsored post on Facebook? To kind of boost it, like you throw 25 bucks at it, and it'll maybe, it'll get people that don't necessarily follow the town, the actual, but it will see anybody in this location. And we can even do it so that it's had a certain name, if we, I can help you out with that, Sandy.
Okay.
But that might be, that might be a good way to broaden our search terms a little bit.
Is there a way to do it on Instagram?
Or, yeah, or in.
That's where teenagers are.
We'd have to have a Wallingford from on Instagram.
That's where teenagers are.
Yeah.
Instagram and TikTok. They're not on Facebook.
I don't think we'd ever get through the algorithm for TikTok to get, to get an ad for Instagram, maybe, but, yeah. I mean, we're looking to get maybe 1,000 people. Like, I've had success with like 50, $50 goes a long way if you have a certain amount of time, if you have a very dedicated thing. But for this, where it has to kind of go for a while, I feel like something as much as 25 would probably be okay. In my experience.
I think we're good then.
Thank you.
Oh, do we, do we need to talk about, or is that the next thing, about the, the sunflower?
That's a.
Are we going to do that next, after this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, they've got Wallingford days updated, and they're split in between. Wallingford day?
Sure. I can put that up here on our disc. Thanks for having me. I have some notes here. I'm Laura, and I, and I'm here as a messenger of Wallingford Day. This is very much a group effort at this point, and there is no one person who's driving it. It's a lot of work on the part of everyone but me, really, because I'm teaching and I'm really busy. So for one, Monica is organizing the food trucks of that day, and one of our questions is about where we can put them in town, and what kind of permits they're going to need. The way we're envisioning Wallingford Day right now is that it will be an all-day event on Saturday, the 16th of July, and it will take place not just at the rec area, as it has the last few years, but it'll be spread a little bit more around town. In the morning, we'll have our, we'll encourage everyone to have their yard sales, as we have in the past. But we aren't going to be directly responsible for that. But there's also people talking about organizing a historical, what is it? It's kind of like a water store scavenger hunt, such as the Quirks Town. And also, maybe having some food trucks that are around town. If you want to speak to this more, Monica, Monica's our food truck group. You don't have to if you don't want to.
There's more of those.
Please.
Maybe a sports event, like their soccer game, or a pickup basketball.
Talking about that, yes, and that, that connects, I mean, yeah, that connects to finding out what's going on with the rec committee and, and what their relationship with Wallingford Day is. Like, it would be, if there is currently a rec committee, I'm not really clear on the details right now about, about where we're at with the rec committee.
We actually have that on our agenda for this evening.
Wonderful, because, because historically, Wallingford Day is under the auspices of the rec committee, which helps us be insured. And so our, I guess that would be nice to be clarified as far as our continued relationship with.
The weeks.
And, so yes, sporting event, I have a list here. So products, food trucks, the fireworks, I have contacted the fireworks person, Chuck of CNC Fireworks, Chuck Greenow, and he has penciled us in. Last year, we paid $5,000 for that, and that was covered by Barbara Kaminsky's generous donation. And, I mean, at this point, our budget, our available funds for Wallingford Day would also cover that. So he's going to come back, he's going to try to keep it as close as possible to what we paid last year, because he cares about Wallingford and that sort of event. We're talking about getting a DJ, we're still sorting out the details of that. Another question that we have was if we could get a banner that we can put across the street, if that's a question that the select board.
I'd imagine it would be a temporary signed permit through Erica, but I guess we would have to.
So that's how that would go. So I'll talk to you.
Any permits, book permit.
Okay, so we'll talk to you about that. Thank you, that's excellent. Let's see, we still need. Let's see, we still need volunteers. Let that be in the minutes at Wallingford Day, we'll have volunteers. Ideally, I mean, really in the last few weeks and before, and maybe the last couple of weeks before, and the day of, would be wonderful.
Like, specifically, like, for getting set up, getting broken down, that kind of stuff?
Set up, broken down, um, helping people know, like, being available to provide information to people who are moving around, especially if we have more events in town.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Let's see. I'm not, I don't, I don't know that we've made a decision on that yet. Something like that. Music is, is evening, and that's what's going to bring people down to the rec area. The music will be down there. Ideally, we'll have at least two food trucks down there. Last year, we had two food trucks at the parking lot at, um, at Stone Meadow Park, and they sold out both of them.
Yeah.
And what we've been talking about is finding out, maybe we need to talk to the fire district about putting the food trucks in the lot at the end of Meadow.
Meadow Street.
Down there, and that would also prevent people from parking down there. We don't want anyone parking at the end. We want that to be, um, clear by the time the fireworks.
That would be.
A safe turnaround for people, so we have space for emergency vehicles if necessary, like, we want that to be not people in it. So it seems like it would make sense to put food trucks there, and then it would clear that in time for fireworks to open. So that's another. But is that, that's, is that the fire district's space?
Well, the turnaround?
Yeah.
The.
At parking lot.
That lot at Meadow.
Right. What do you think, Nelson?
I don't see any problem with it. Yeah.
Is the turnaround, is the turnaround the town's jurisdiction or the?
Yeah, they should be.
Is it, is it the town's jurid- jurisdiction, or is it the fire districts? Does Maria have to go get an okay from the fire district on this?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure.
So it's worth checking with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think as long as you stay in the paved portion or the, the travel portion of the road, I don't think it's.
I, I know.
It was used to the fire district.
Okay.
The issue is always the fields themselves, where all the town water wells are.
Right, and we will check about that, and we'll make sure that when, when I confirm and check about, check about how much he's charging us, that we get that same form that we got last year, that we can submit to you.
We'll go to, um, that changed a little bit, so you get the application from the fire chief, and then he has to come to the select board.
So is the fire chief going to say?
Yes.
Okay, I will check with him. Maria? Yeah, go ahead. Please ignore the end, you were more about meeting the headless.
We have four food trucks this year.
Sorry?
We have four food trucks this year.
Yes.
And we have Tom Line, Darkseal, um, and then we have an advantage for rec field, and then we have the music and fireworks, right? And maybe even a carnival, if that's the words. Okay, so my question is staggering the food trucks, is there a place where they can be in the village, and then they'll be down to the rec fields for the music and the fireworks, for the music before the fireworks? So they, just to be available more visibly, and that, are there people from the town that'd be going down there? Is that possible?
I, I think you always said safe place, really, if you want to be in town, like, in the library, because I don't think Main Street, that they would like a food truck outside their window. I'd imagine.
Good point.
But the library, you said the crosswalk there, and there's a four-way crosswalk there.
What about the fire station, that parking space over there, is that a possibility?
That would have to be on them, but I feel like that's, that's not.
I don't think that they want us to lock that parking lot in case that there's an emergency and they park there.
Yeah.
My guess.
And, and also, it's outside of, down, like, in the, in the center of town, I feel like. If you want to have more people to come to it or just notice it's happening, you want to have it as the most visible space, and I feel like that's for the library. But I don't know, because.
At the meeting, Barbara Kraminsky said, you know, even her driveway.
Oh, wow.
Maybe the Congregational Church, we have that, I mean, I, I'm not speaking for that.
You'd have to, you'd have to con, you'd have to contact the church, and you might also need to check with the old stone shop, because they kind of share the parking at that location.
Behind the thrift shop, too. They have the parking lot behind the.
They have a thrift shop by the Catholic Church, I don't know.
Okay, that's good to add, checking both. I think we should just send out, we should just contact everybody, just have a conversation, and that's worth doing. Doesn't mean that we're demanding anything, it just means we're kind of feeling out what people, what people would be comfortable with.
You never know.
Shell, and like, we did mark them, they can park anywhere.
Really? Like, in any parking spot, we don't have any prescriptions. That's a good point.
So, they could park, yeah, in Mark's driveway, they can park in my driveway?
Okay. Okay.
Did you ask for Shell, you can park next to the block? They can park next to the block.
Okay, well, we'll.
There we go, there's some locations.
So they do need permits.
Permits, yes, so they, they would be individually responsible for coming to queue directly for us.
Justin's a good point, too, in that it would help if they were close to a crosswalk, so people could cross safely.
Exactly, because otherwise, people will be crossing everywhere, and there's a lot of traffic. If weather is nice, there's going to be a lot of traffic for your sale.
Yeah.
These are those people who are going to be crossing, they want to give them the option.
We don't want to be the reason why they're crossing for.
All right, so that's.
You got Michelle?
Yeah, I've got all kinds of looks, but the, the food trucks themselves, I'll do a contact, contact there. But for a permit.
For the permits.
Yeah, I, I feel like, like, catty corner with the, at the, at the library would probably be the best, because you have the first spot, and then on the, the, which are on the 140 end, and then you have the first spot on the, um, 7 end. That kind of, if you had them both there, that'd be pretty cool.
Yeah, right.
And you wouldn't be sacrificing that many parking spots, too, if we think about people always talking about not enough parking in town.
Well, you can put at least two, and then that they're over the library, is one across the street.
It just, the, the visual, I feel like, of having two right on the corner could be, and also, it would, it would spread them out a little bit, so you're not getting completely choked hold of right at.
And there's plenty of sidewalk, and there's plenty of lawn, too.
Yes.
Public, for them to stand on, it would be someone's, someone would be upset about. So that's, so let's see, we've got.
Maria?
Yes.
Is there money in the budget to cover the permits?
Um, we can talk about that later. Would be good, and also, there's also, I mean, I had an exchange of emails in January with Julie, and she's not here, so I, so I can't confirm that, but. Um, I mean, I can say, but I, there was some discussion over the town managing Wallingford Day funds.
Right.
And, um, so, we have 67, around $6,700 available that, and the year, fiscal year closes on June 30th. Right here, it says there's no budget for fiscal year 23, 2023, but there's a, I had a planned budget and paid for 2023 Wallingford Day out of the fiscal year 24 budget, starting July 1st, 2023, but that doesn't make any sense. So, and then there was some comment that I heard from this select board from the last few months, it was something about, maybe we don't want to be a bank for Wallingford Day anymore.
I think what Julie mentioned, was talking about was, um, so the 6,700 you have now would pay for this summer. There's nothing in the next budget, the summer's paid for, and then the following budget would start July 1st, and then the idea was to put money in FY '24 that you could use for next summers, but it was only going to be, like, not a stipend, but it wasn't, what, they had discussed, like, a thousand, fifteen hundred, so it wasn't like the level you're talking now.
It would be an appropriation, like, we do for Red Cross, or some of the other, the rescue squad, that type of a thing. It would not be a walling for town government.
Right, I mean, the money that's currently available to us is money that we raised for Wallingford Day, I didn't raise money out of the town's budget at all. And we've never expected any money out of the town's budget, but having the town handle the money, I think, helped us stay covered by insurance and keeping us under rec committee connections, and that was, what was mainly important to us, was that, that we were keeping everybody's stake. We're not, I, we're not looking for necessarily money for the town. I think we can figure out ways to fundraise, but, um, I would appreciate us remaining associated, providing the town event, and not being something completely bad. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We didn't fundraise the last two years, because we, with this understanding that, that it was hard times for a lot of people, and we wanted to provide a chance for people to come together and not have it being asked. And as we come out of the pandemic, I think we can start to generally fundraise some more, and there are people who are able to help us, but, um, and Barbara Kraminsky has been, and has the generous funding for fireworks for the last two towns.
We've got some issues, though, with the town writing checks. Our insurer holds, if something was to happen, would hold the town liable. For $100, Wallingford Day Committee can get event insurance.
But what's the?
It's not. The town should not be the bank for this event. The town should not be the bank for anything other than town business, I mean.
But wouldn't.
I don't see how we're the bank when we're raising the money.
Because it ends up in town coffers, it shows up on our budget line, and the town writes the checks. And then when we get audited, or if we were to get professionally audited, there would be an issue with the town writing checks for this.
So you would, you would propose that they would have to, because they would then have to file as a nonprofit, then? They have to have an own company be able to get that permit? I'm just, just curious, I was trying to think it out, because we've been doing it for two years, we've been doing it that way, so we should probably try to help them, if we're not thinking this, but I, I also think that events like this is a town activity, it is a town, it's something that boosts our town directly, benefit from it directly.
And realistically, we're not going to be able to provide unlimited volunteers forever for this, and I, I think the more that we can work in concert with the rec committee, because this is an important recreational activity for the town, the stronger it will be and the more sustainable it will be. This has been really important to a lot of people. When we brought back Wallingford Day, it was really exciting, and, and I think it's continually helped bring us together. I've heard, um, people, I've heard various comments about how, you know, if you just, like, there's great outdoors, and people just step outside, it's there. We don't need to, to facilitate opportunities for people to recreate. But I think we do, I think more and more people are on their screens, or they're on their screens, or they're on their screens, basically. And it's really hard to pry people out and get people outside, especially kids these days, and the more chances we can have to bring them out and make it fun for them, the better it is, the more we can be face-to-face, especially when we've been so isolated lately, so I think it's really something worth supporting.
The social aspect is, you see people you never run into, it helps unify our town.
And I think there's a, a tradition here in Vermont to have events like this that help bring people together. Other places try, try to have things like this, and might not be able to build the same community. Um, I think this is really a, a, a great thing that benefits Wallingford in many various ways. And one way is the building of community.
That's where you get your volunteers, your people wanting to stay in town and get people to come to town.
Your camera, please.
And if I may, it also encourages those of us that live on some main street to be sure that our volunteer.
Whatever it takes.
Well, yes, it's not like the carnival's coming to town, we're being asked to support the carnival, this, this does directly affect our community and publicize our community.
And bring business to our community, I would say, but there's a lot of people who come from out of town that raise, and not just people from Wallingford.
So do we have to think about that or put that for a discussion at a later date, the idea of how we handle Wallingford Day?
We could put that forward on the, on another agenda.
Can bring it up again, I mean, the previous board had made the decision that the town was not going to be the, the bank for Wallingford Day, so.
I'm not sure everybody here agrees that by helping out Wallingford Day, that we become the bank. I mean, I'm speaking for my own opinion, but I, I would be willing to discuss this again. I wonder what my fellow board members think.
I think we can discuss it again, but we do have to keep in mind that a lot of times, when we're dealing with the federal government, the town of Wallingford is like any business. We do get required audits, and I think we need to research the banking principle.
I would agree with that, I think that's something that needs.
Because the last time we had an audit, uh, this was one of the reasons that we eventually, the old board actually said that we would not be doing these payouts anymore, because we did get questioned in our, in our audit.
Because it wasn't technically a?
It wasn't really technically being funded through, you know, something we could just go, it was, we were doing the banking for an outside organization that was working with one of our committees.
Okay.
I think that makes a lot of sense, just for clarifying that, and, and I think that, then that actually means that we once the rec committee is more settled, that we need to talk more intensively with them about how much they're willing to take on about Wallingford Day, and what that relationship needs to be.
And they could help research, how do other towns handle this, because we see strawberry festivals, maple festivals all over that are town-based.
Because I, I could see the concern of making sure that the money stays separate.
Yes.
But it's, yeah, but it's also, it's, do we want the money to stay separate, but we also want to, we also want to encourage it to continue on as, as a town-wide thing?
Um, I'm not.
No, I know.
I'm not opposed to the Wallingford Day.
No, I know, yes.
I'm saying we need to be separate, it needs to be separate financially from the town's finances.
Unless it's part of the rec committee.
I would be happy to talk to Brandon about how they, because they have a lot of town eventually, and how the relationship is with the town, and then their.
His tour has been quite active the last couple of years.
Belmont.
Yeah.
I'm happy to talk to him and find out.
A little sub-town has festivals all the time.
Okay, I'll check with him.
And they also have a music, a music festival every summer.
Yes, they do.
Well, isn't the Wallingford Day actually a recreation function?
No, it didn't start that way, no.
So the question then is, going forward, does it?
It was started by a group of townspeople.
But that, I'm sorry to break a question from the public, as to why are we putting Quirip under the rec committee as a sponsor, but still have the Wallingford Day Committee as a subcommittee for the rec committee?
Or at least as a coordinator, not formal sponsor.
The, back in its old, before it was revived, if I am correct, it was the fire district that took over, the volunteer fire department, that helped host the, the chicken dinner and the carnival, things and the music, it was.
Fire department did it.
The fire department did it.
Yes.
Eventually, interest dwindled.
Right.
Exactly.
They gave it up.
And they ran out of volunteers, is what happened.
Yes.
Yep. But it was the.
For several years, there was nothing, and then.
Yep, it was the, which was the fire department, right?
So by Quirip being, uh, started as the fire department, you could run the money through the fire department. If it's the rec committee, could you run it through the town government, because the town government sponsors the rec committee, hence it's a government-sponsored community?
Which I think is, if, when Maria is able to contact those other towns to see, that's just to see, because if there's precedent in other towns to say, oh, no, we actually do need this to have its own 501(c)(3) that is just for this.
Exactly.
Then we should go with that.
Exactly.
And we'll need support in setting that up. Um, and, and just for the record, in 2019, we were definitely under the auspices of the rec committee, and then the rec committee became a less stable place.
Right.
There's a lot of groups who can support us.
Yes.
It would be great if it could be the town. Thank you for, for taking the time on this, this is really important to me.
Well, thank you.
Elfin Lake Concession Project.
Now you're on.
Oh, it's me. So, uh, my daughter Macy is a young local person and keeping with the Wallingford Day emote sunflowers this year and the Elfin Lake projects going on here. This is a great segue. She's interested in, um, painting a mural on the snack bar beside, um, by all the grass. Went out and checked it out, um, to see which side would be best. And she came up with a.
Oh, it's beautiful.
For the, um, the side of the hall.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
So I have to tell you that just the other day, we were walking, we walk up Mill Street often and Michael commented on the beautiful mural and I said, well, that's Monica's house and I bet Macy did it. And I was right.
It's a garage door, so big blend cans. So one thing that we noticed was that it seems to be freshly painted. Did that just happen with volunteers this, this past year?
A couple of summers ago, I think a few volunteers did something.
Yes, yes.
So the thought, a couple of thoughts about this project. Um, one would be to keep the white background because it's freshly painted and then just do bursts of a wash of a blueberry background. Um, and then do flowers scattered about. She was thinking that it would take, it's a 40-hour project. So, um, over the course of two weeks, she'd be finished it. And it would be about eight hundred dollars in labor. And, um, I think that talking with other locals, thinking that the town might be able to supply the paint.
How much for the paint?
Paint is about, um, fifty dollars a gallon for exterior paint right now.
And how, how many gallons?
No, she's trying to keep the white background, um, probably a gallon of each color.
Okay.
And let people have a tax exempt number so that that's the cost. But those are some thoughts.
Okay.
And if, um, a few, a full mural is too wild, I'm thinking in terms of just doing sunflowers themselves around different parts of the building, it would be as costly. But the idea of a mural on that whole side of that building.
And, and just one more time, the cost of one gallon of paint was how much?
It's about fifty bucks right now.
Fifty dollars, okay, thank you.
About four colors.
Four colors, okay. So that would be four gallons?
Has she, has she had experience doing mural this large in a space that, like, as I know the others? Yeah, because the.
Doing redlands?
Yeah.
No, no, she wasn't part of the redland project, she doesn't know us.
No, yeah, 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 I didn't figure it, but it's just wondering if she's not, just in terms of knowing when that's. Because I know it's, it's just, it's a different process transferring. I know your garage is gorgeous, but like, just, just knowing that if we're going to, if we would be able to give the money towards the materials or whatever, like making sure that it's going to last for a certain amount of time. So it's not just getting repainted over.
Not going to get painted over?
Yeah, would it, just like in terms of, it's like, how long do you think it should last? That's the, that's what I would ask.
Oh, well, how long did the white paint last on the building? When's the last time that building's been painted?
Well, before, before the, like, two summers ago. I mean, I've been here nine years, it hasn't been raining before that, so, I mean, it's lasted quite a while. As long as people leave it alone, it should last.
Yes, and that's why she picked that side of the building, because it seems to get the most sun, so it's, it'll be the most stable. The other sides seem to have, um, there's already mildew on them and it's a little darker. And also, you know, that is, that is visible there, so.
Are they successful, like a polyurethane coating on stuff? Does it affect the paint or? Do you have any?
Oh, some kind of, um, sealant, you mean?
Like a clear coat or something?
Like the clear coated out.
I was thinking the same thing.
Pretty much unknown then.
I don't.
I guess you could tell to somebody like, yeah, your paint, and ask them how, how you apply something, you know, concrete.
Did you accept going to Connecticut or has she let you know?
I don't think she's going. How long, how, oh, so like about a week, right?
She thinks about 40 hours.
Okay, good, alright.
But, um, yeah, she's not going to pull a one week, eight hours a day. So it'll be over like maybe two weeks, 20 hours a week.
We have somebody coming in, I think Ray made, do cutters, so that would be good if we got those done before.
We'd better do the gutters first.
Work around some of the summer camps too, so, but we'll figure the timing out later.
Timing can be figured out, thank you.
Oh, the estimate of gutter is 800?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think the more mules we can have or more public art we can have in towns, the best. I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to, if we would be outlaying this cost, that it would last. If it was, if we're outlaying this cost, that it would last and that it would just be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like John McClellan has offered his stipend towards this.
Yes, he has a thousand dollar stipend he hasn't used yet. John McClellan, so he said, he said, we could put the thousand dollars towards this?
Yes.
Or whatever you want, he said, or whatever the select board wants to do.
Should I tell her yes? Are we voting?
Do you want to make a decision now?
Yeah, actually, if we do the gutters, that's 800.
So the second was for any of the improvements on it? What was it specifically for the new one?
Like, I don't think we could take the mural out of the building fund.
Well, we could do the gutters out of the building fund, right?
We could do the, um. Actually, I was looking at, when you take the dock out of the recomission, commission and the other couple of expenses they have, I would rather see the mural come out of the recreation fund rather than tell the building fund, because that actually gets more of that recreation amount stamped before the end of the year.
The only thing is that John has offered to use the leftover stipend to pay for this mural. Can we use that money towards mural cost? John has offered.
I don't think we could use, I don't think we could legitimately take it out of the building fund.
I'm not talking about the building fund, I'm talking about John McClellan's stipend.
Yeah, you could use this for almost anything.
So what do you think about using the leftover stipend money towards, because John has offered?
I would say we make an offer that, or I would make a motion that we do it, but not to exceed the 800 dollars. And then we pay for, reimburse for materials.
So we would reimburse for materials?
Yes.
Okay. So that means we would cover the labor for 800 and that we would reimburse materials. Does that sound?
That sounds great.
What is, you know, when, so we need a second on the motion, so maybe a second on the motion.
You've got a thousand dollars from John. Normally I would have 1100. I had made an offer to Joyce that if she went to Connecticut, that they could take that out of my 1100. So I can't readily say, well, you could use my 1100 for that until we get a reply back from Joyce. Assuming Joyce probably more than once ago, uh, that would give us 2100 of the two, two salaries. That should be enough to cover both the mural and the gutters. I would think awaiting Joyce's decision, if she goes or doesn't, that would give you 2100. Let's put that down as a proposed, uh, to cover those two expenses.
Do we need to make another motion?
Well, we have one on the floor right now.
So we have a motion on the floor that we will fund, um, 800 dollars of labor and reimburse costs of the mural. Do you want to?
Does it, did we get that seconded?
It got seconded, Bruce proposed it and I seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Can we, can we talk about dates that were, to start?
If Joyce doesn't accept, then we'll go ahead next meeting and do that.
Okay.
And this is by consensus, it'll be used, uh, out of John's stipend?
Yeah.
But with the money coming first for the labor and then basically would have to buy the materials and then.
And then we would reimburse.
One more deal, we'll reimburse.
Thank you.
Numbering says to the dock. I didn't think they were that expensive.
No.
Well, I think the rec committee had asked for 6100 for the dock, am I correct on that?
One is what, 4736 and the other is 5292.
The budget has, the price has increased since they got this budget. Over 6100 for the tennis, that's right.
61 for the tennis, we should use the tennis.
Thank you.
They didn't, yeah, they didn't. Is it on that list that I gave you, Kathy?
Uh, the tennis?
No, the dock.
The dock is on here. A 10 by 10 dock, high country, 4180 plus 300 shipping. It's not that anymore.
I'm not going to go down.
So the, the high country, it almost being, is that the fully part plastic? That almost being, almost direct, it seems to what we have now? Is that what I was listening?
It kind of looks that way, it's kind of hard to tell from a black and white picture.
What you have now is an eight by eight dock?
Yeah, eight by eight dock. Here we go, here's the prices.
Are both these estimates good for 30 days?
Yes.
And for high country, this estimate, this is for three separate docks, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know why they did it like that, but yes.
They provide any info on what their product is?
What's that?
Did they provide you with any info on what their product is? I mean, what the dock is?
High country? Very vague about what it is. It's just that hard plastic, which is what we have.
It's what we have now.
It's, yeah, that, that one we have now is that hard composite or whatever. I mean, I say plastic, but it's not just.
It's like a rota form where it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's out of a, it's out of a mold versus being a solid piece of plastic. So it floats easier. But it looks like it's, it, they're both slightly, they're, they have more of a metal frame around. At least from the images that we can see. Because I would say that plastic, I would worry that it would, the exact same thing would happen that we have with ours, where it's starting to bow out, starting to kind of flex, the, for the docks.
And the galvan steel wouldn't do that?
Well, because it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't be affected by the sun, the UV, I would imagine. But I, it's confusing about, because they had, the image that they show looks like it's got a metal surround and then maybe it's a plastic top, while the other one is the metal, definitely a metal frame and then cedar planking.
There's no warranty on the cedar?
No warranty on the cedar, but the whole structure gets 10 years.
Okay.
Is that right? Yeah.
No, I felt the dock doctor was a better product, looking.
That's also, it's better price and I think, I feel like cedars are just a nicer material than the plastic. And if we need to, I'm sure there would be something where we could replace the slot, I would imagine.
Yeah, it talks about wear decking and sounds like that's something you could replace if need to be.
Right.
Providing anchors and chains and all that stuff and the price, I'm not sure about high country.
Right.
Doesn't really seem to save it.
Now, do we have anchors? We picked up rope and.
Remember Adam and Mike, Michael going over there?
I do.
With the concrete blocks that floated off?
That floated off.
That's what we have.
This would be much better.
The slab would be better.
I think dock doctors has a better product than. And they include, even though the price is higher, they include a lot more for their price.
No, actually it's cheaper, because dock doctor is total 47 and then the high country is 56.
Oh.
52.
52. 500 bucks?
Ben, I would agree, dock doctors looks better.
Oh, the one thing though, noticing their, the invoice for dock doctors is that if we don't install it, if we want, if we want them to install it, it's 1500 to 1900.
You have a solid what?
If we don't, if we don't want to do the install ourselves, it'd be 15 to 1900 dollars from them to install it.
I mean, we have Michael and Zayn and Adam somewhere else.
I think we have other people on that, I just want to make sure that, I saw that, I was like, oh, I didn't see that before.
I'll have to tell Adam he's got a job this month.
He, he did say, uh, maybe when they deliver, they could explain it. He did say if you attach, because there's an anchoring system down below and they said if you just attach like a, um, a rope or something, so that when you, you pull it out in this, to store it in the winter, if you, if you just pull that rope out and like tie it to a tree or something, so it'll, you'll know exactly where that anchor system is. So the anchor system would stay in there all winter and if you just secure that rope somewhere through the winter, you know exactly where it is when you bring the dock out there next spring.
It could just be a buoy, right? You wouldn't even have to.
Yeah, I mean, if we could just, you know, if we could get people just to leave stuff alone when, in the office.
That's a whole nother.
Yeah.
Michael and Adam chased that dock several times last.
They did.
Before this lake even opened.
It was not good. Okay. Okay, I make a motion that we, um, purchase the dock doctors, um, dock for the lake for this.
Is that a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sandy, do you need to color the decking?
Oh, no, you guys, you folks, what do you like?
I just noticed again that there was a, had a choice, three choices.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a preference, because they'll probably, they'll probably get it ordered soon.
What are the options?
Uh, let's see, if I can find.
Barefoot sand, barefoot gray or weatherwood?
So what was that, Bruce?
So what was that, Bruce?
One is called socialite.
Is barefoot sand, or barefoot gray, or weatherwood? Weatherwood? I don't know.
I think the weatherwood looked nice.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Sounds good to me.
Weatherwood? Got it.
Oh, yeah, I like the weatherwood.
Does anybody else want to see?
Anybody else want to see?
Here.
That's the weatherwood.
The darker one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are you the look-arts, you're the banana killer.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good with that. Recreation Committee appointments. Sandy's had three or four replies that did sign off on the forms that we sent to them. The three that are currently signed off are Sumio Seo, Brian Ferguson, and Jordan. I guess those are the three that we can consider as the candidates. Any comments, motions? Any input?
I, I would just say, I've heard from some towns, people, I bet other people have too, that they would really rather not have people who are not living in Wallingford being on the committee.
Uh, he did not reply.
Okay. Okay.
It is just the three.
So we've just had Wallingford residents, and they're all Wallingford residents?
So, and Carol Tashin, right?
Oh, and Carol Tashin.
She withdrew tonight.
Oh!
Let the deal with my dad.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sumio Seo. Let's see, who is it? Jordan Jankis and...
Brian Ferguson.
Brian Ferguson to the committee at this point.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the three, say aye.
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 Liquor licenses. We have a fair stack of them here.
Yes.
With, if there are no exceptions to the...
Yes.
Licenses that were, were given here, would somebody make a motion to accept these?
I make a motion.
They'll have to be signed off.
Right. I make a motion that we accept the liquor license requests?
Applications.
Applications, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would just note there is one third class license.
Okay.
Refurbishing Town Hall, second floor, is the price still 24 on that, Sandy?
Yeah, it's still, and we just need to know where you want that, if you want that to come out of the building fund. He's actually going to try to get it done before your next meeting.
The board, I think, accepted this probably six months to a year ago, but we do need to sign off on it.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we pay for the 2,400 cost of refinishing the town hall floors from the building fund.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Select board's concerns.
I, I know that, I asked Sandy today about the work to be done by Justin Philskoff on the grading on the basketball court of the, because it's getting, spring is here, and people are playing on that court, and that could be a problem, of the overhang of the ground over the basketball court. And Sandy went and said, we have, I think it's on here on this list, I have a budget request?
Correct?
700.
Right.
Yes.
That's, um, so the REC committee last budget time in December came with a list of everything that they would like out of the $14,000 CD.
Yeah. And the 700 for the, for FAS to do the grading.
Yes.
And that now would be the time to do the work.
We just have, we just have to double check with Justin Philskoff to make sure that's...
We're on hold cable, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you if you want to go with that, if you're going to approve it, as long as he sticks with that price, if that's what you want to do? Or I can come back and...
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that the select board is willing to pay $700 to edge the basketball court with that FAS.
Yeah, second. All in favor, aye. Uh, other business. Uh, we have a letter from Blue Cross Blue Shield. I don't know if anybody has any comments that you want to forward, I'd suggest you give them to Sandy, and she can see to it. Reminder that there's a free dental clinic here. I think they can take up to nine people. Congressman Welch, we've been in touch with him. Hopefully, maybe something will happen to the Creek Road Bridge on the grant that he's looking into. And something has come up a number of times since I've been on the board. They're looking to see if we're interested in selling the lease that we have with the cell tower. I think we're down to about 14,5 a month now. It started out, summers around about 2,000. Obviously, they're looking to do a better price all the time. In the past, we've pretty much said, no, we're not really interested in looking at proposals. Personally, I'm always open to anything that could give us more money. I doubt seriously that they're going to offer more than what we're getting. I could be proved wrong on that, but from past experiences, I don't think so.
So it's not them asking to buy out our, our thing, it's, it's them wanting to be lesser?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have the option of two more five-year renewals, so. Other than that, I think we're about that time of day again.
Would it be worthwhile to talk to the man anyway?
I would say let's just talk to him, not commit to anything, but just have a conversation.
Let's see if they can beat it or...
Yeah.
Whatever the board would prefer. Go ahead and say that we will.
We don't have to accept anything.
Except, let's see what his proposal is.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.